Good afternoon. It's one o'clock. I would like to officially call the CPS Board of Trustees meeting to be held on May 22, 2023 at 1:00 PM officially to order. So again, it is one o'clock. Welcome, everyone. I would like to again call officially the meeting to order. And if we can go ahead, Ms. Ramirez, do a confirm the quorum.
Yes, ma'am. We have trustee Dr. Mackey, we have trustee Steen, vice chair Romero, and yourself. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The next item, if we can, the safety message invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And I believe Ms. Maria Staten will be delivering the safety message along with the invocation.
Yes, ma'am.
And the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much, Maria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our evacuation procedures, we want to make sure that everyone knows that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, please follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy. And while we hope that the information is never needed, we want to be sure we're always ready. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Additionally, after, as we start the week that will mark the one-year anniversary of the tragedy in Uvalde, we ask that we pause for a moment of silence to remember the lives lost and pray for strength for the impacted families and our neighboring Thank you. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Maria Staten, for that. Item number three, and this will be public comment.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they are going to speak about. For this meeting, we have six in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Manasa Durkan.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang. I will make my speech real quick because I have typed typed my speech. And what I would like to do is congratulate CJ, who I read about him, that he was very grateful that all his power was back in his house. And I would like to know if anybody could make it possible so I can meet CJ. Also, when I'm out there in the public, I see the workers and I ask them, what do you think about the female chairperson and the female vice chair? And they say they love it that women are finally getting what they deserve. And also Lily Carpenter, I couldn't do without her. She's an amazing woman. And Ms. Stratton, she has also been very much a lot of support when I needed. And I know that a lot of the people are giving me information so I can get a lot of persons, not that I know, and a lot of people that I don't know involved in your Casa Verde program. But I'm going to cut it short. Is Lujan here? But I will, I will show you what he has coming. Especially made for him. Lujan. And there's Gaston saying, good job, Lujan. He earned it. See, somebody's watching. He's doing his work. And then here comes Watt for Medina. Great job, Medina. Great job. And these were specially made. And this. It's Gaston asking Watt, what do you think about El Jefe? And here is Watt winking. Thank you. And blessings to Blaze. He's not here, but I'm glad somebody else brought me my coffee and Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Castillo because actually, everybody here makes my day. I love being here. I stop at all the constructions and I do thank the workers because even clerical engineers, everybody is important. CPS would not be CPS with 100% put in by all the workers. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Manasa Durkan, followed by Erin Perensky.
Hello, I'm Manasa Durkan, down here from Dallas, Texas with Durkan Properties. And we are doing a medical development over by Westover Hills. I got a, I asked for time on the agenda today related to item 10 of supply chain impact. When we came down to do the development from Dallas, we planned it, we designed it, and then we were told that we maybe had a 16-month transformer delay. I, in the past couple of weeks leading up to this, my purpose for coming down has changed because we got with your staff and your team. And specifically, I want to call out Jacob Bissel, who helped us with your engineering team. And as of about 10 days ago, we got word that we have come up with a solution and we are no longer waiting for transformers. So we worked on some refurbished options and such. I just wanted to take the two minutes to tell you all thank you. Your staff is awesome and we have solved our problem and are no longer waiting. So thank you for the great work.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Erin Perensky, followed by Shad Schmidt.
Thank you. My name is Erin Perensky. I am a local consultant civil engineer with Kimley Horn. I'm here today representing Real Estate Council of San Antonio to speak on Agenda Item 10. Prior to 2022, supply of materials had generally not been a concern when requesting service from CPS. Well, it's a big problem now, as the example we just heard. But it's also a big problem that we've come to learn is mostly related to issues beyond the control of anyone at CPS. We started seeing troubling signs of material supply shortages late in 2021. And this was for various materials industry-wide, not just related to electrical equipment. Right away, in coordination with Mr. Garza and the service design and delivery team, we organized a group of stakeholders that met here in this building to gain a better understanding of what was going on and start talking about what we were going to do about it. The ad hoc communication and collaboration continued into 2022 and continues through this year as well. Together, we've come up with the monthly report that was distributed to the community. The project queue list has been posted publicly. An extraordinary flexibility has been shown in both the sourcing of materials and the processes which those materials are deployed. Another system update that was coordinated with community stakeholders during this period was the resetting of the fee structure associated with the kayak program, something that hadn't been updated by CPS in over a decade. This is bringing the fees charged for new service more in line with current market prices. For most of 2022, CPS was generally able to minimize the negative impact of material shortages for as long as could be done. This was all very helpful until later in 2022, when we went from having a sporadic supply of certain materials to trucks from suppliers not showing up at all, sometimes with little to no advance warning to CPS, making a very tough situation even harder. All this during a very high-growth period of the greater San Antonio metro area. We appreciate the continued collaboration and extraordinary transparency we have experienced since all of this started to show signs of trouble back in late 2021. And we would very much appreciate the continued partnership with CPS Energy as we continue to work through this unprecedented period, unprecedented period of material shortage together.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Shad Schmidt, followed by Patrick Garcia.
Good afternoon. My name is Shad Schmidt. I'm a single-family lot developer here in San Antonio. I'm also the president of the Greater San Antonio Builders Association. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today on Agenda Item Number 10, which is the supply chain impacts development. Historically, getting new communities energized with electricity from CPS has never been an issue. It's not that way today. I think we all know that. It's not a unique problem to San Antonio and CPS either. This is something that's affecting the entire state as well as the entire nation. Material shortages started, you know, began in 2021, got worse in 2022, and continue through today. Initially, for the home building industry, it was meter cans for home builders. We couldn't get those. But CPS and the staff and the builder community worked together to overcome that issue. CPS quickly reacted and evaluated other options and also reviewed options presented by home builders while still maintaining quality and safety. In late 2021, early 2022, we began to hear about transformer shortages. I personally experienced this in Laredo with A E P on a project down there in the first half of 2021 that delayed that project by four months. In late 2021, Gassaba, along with Rexha, began meeting with CPS, talking about specifically about transformers, other materials. And that open communication, collaboration, and transparency continues today. Some of the things that have come out of those meetings that Erin mentioned, you know, a monthly report tracker that informs the development community of inventory in stock, on order, delivery dates, et cetera. Worked extensively with CPS to have the transformer queue lists for those waiting for transformers for their communities posted publicly, which greatly improved transparency among the development community. Unprecedented flexibility by CPS and material specifications, as well as in the process by which material is acquired and distributed to project sites. For example, developers are now allowed to work with CPS to redistribute transformers across multiple projects to lessen the impact of the material shortage when one owner has multiple projects affected, allowing owners to swap projects in the queue depending on their priorities among their own projects. CPS is also reviewing partial electrification of projects on a case-by-case basis where that can be done. We believe CPS staff has been and continues to be very helpful in exploring the alternatives related to products, suppliers, processes, anything that might help the development community and CPS manage the situation as best we can. Gassaba is grateful for the relationship that we have with CPS and would very much appreciate the continued partnership with CPS Energy as we continue to work through these material shortage issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Our final speaker is Patrick Garcia.
Ms. Chairwoman Gonzalez and the CPS Board of Energy Justies. My name is Patrick Garcia. I represent the 109-year-old San Antonio Manufacturing Association, SAMA, as the chairman of the board. History was made five decades ago with CPS Energy and SAMA under the guidance of our former chairman Howard Rogers, who guided Norma Solis and formed the CPS Energy Rate, which created the commercial rates for super-large power, electric, and large-volume gas rates. This partnership was handled like family. It helped structure what will become one of San Antonio's monumental opportunities to attract and keep large manufacturers and businesses in San Antonio. It was job creation and preservation. Last Thursday, another milestone occurred between CPS Energy's team with my guidance to promote community partnering opportunities with one of SAMA's manufacturers, Alamo Transformer, a 60-year-old family business located in San Antonio. As you heard earlier, there was many articles faced about where CPS Energy was faced with material supply shortages. So after my learning curve about Alamo Transformers, I reached out to my two CPS representatives, Karma Nielsen, Customer Value Optimization, and Maria Staten, VP of Supply Chain. So I had to convince them that the right thing to do was to bring together the CPS Energy team, and they did. The meeting was full of enthusiasm, and it opened the door to revenue stream opportunities for CPS Energy, as well as some significant cost savings that could be realized. With the meeting with Alamo Transformers underscores the relationship between SAMA and CPS Energy, one that is beneficial to our manufacturing community. To the CPS Board, I applaud your energy team's openness and trust to collaborate together with SAMA to create solutions for all customers, including manufacturers such as Alamo Transformers, who will help look to close the gap to fill CPS Energy's top supply needs in the area of both single- and three-phase pads and single-phase poles.
Again, I want to thank all the citizens who signed up to speak. If item number four is Chair's remarks. And so on that note, again, I want to first, good afternoon to everyone who's here in the audience, and for those of you who are participating remotely, and for those of you, again, who signed up to speak, it's really important that you participate. We have a really packed agenda this afternoon, and we're going to set the tone for the summer. So let's talk about summer. The summer is fast approaching. We've experienced a lot of rain, but San Antonio and how we're experiencing the rain across the nation, today it's hot, tomorrow it's extremely hot. So with that, we expect, we expect some hot days along with increased energy demand and the risk of price spikes. CPS Energy will be launching an energy conservation and savings campaign, along with volunteering with community-based organizations throughout the summer to beat the heat. We will distribute fans, window units, and provide conservation tips and more. At these events, our customer response unit teams will be available for further assistance. That assistance can range everything from how to obtain rebates to how to qualify for some of our payment plan programs, as well as the Vista Verde programs. To learn more, please visit our website about our scheduled events that will be, again, taking place throughout the summer to beat the heat and to, more importantly, learn about how residential and commercial organizations can leverage the rebates that are available this year. We heard from many individuals about our supply chain. And so again, just want to remind everyone here who's listening and who is in person that the reliability of the electric grid, the nation and the local economy are threatened by the critical short supplies of distribution and transformers and other critical electric infrastructure materials. CPS is responding to the global chain issues with temporary exceptions, as well as creative solutions, and adding more new supplier and manufacturers to the vendor pool to increase the availability of transformer units and to continue to advocate for the support from Texas Legislature, as well as the U.S. Congress to incentivize, incentivize, I'm sorry, increase manufacturing. So we continue to find ways to participate globally, locally, and regionally to find solutions and advocate. Maria Garcia Staten, which you heard from her earlier, the VP of Supply Chain, recently also participated in a podcast with the American Public Power Association, A P P A. This organization recently, in addition to having the podcast, had a supply chain summit that included participation from other public utility organizations and officials such as CPS, where again, the discussion of supply chain challenges were discussed and how we plan to develop mitigation strategies. So not only is it important to us locally, it's also important to us at a national or regional level. Again, one of the most exciting things is that this is what I'm about to speak about next, which is again, associated with the American Public Power Association, Reliable Public Power Provider, is that CPS recently was recognized and earned a Diamond Level Designation for being a reliable public power provider, R P 3, from the American Public Association, A P P A. And so if I can, Rudy, if we could get the plaque, please? And so this honor, this award honors a utility for providing reliable and safe electric services. CPS Energy previously received a Diamond Level Designation in 2019. The R P 3 designation, which lasts for three years, recognizes public power utilities that demonstrate high proficiency in four key disciplines: reliability, safety, workforce development, and systems improvement. The criteria include sound business practices and a utility-wide commitment to safe and reliable delivery of electricity. CPS Energy joins 271 public power utilities nationwide that hold the R P 3 designation. If you can please, those of you who are in the audience, join me in thanking CPS Leadership Delivery Team and the staff for reaching this achievement. So if we can have a run of applause. So I'm not sure if you want a group picture. That can wait till later. Are we good? We'll do it afterwards. And so in closing, one of the things that matters to me as a citizen more than anything is participating in civic participation. So on that note, you know, most people bitten by the political bug plan, who run, who run for office and plan to run, are often, it takes heart to do it. It's not easy to have your family go through it, to knock on doors, to fundraise, and again, to believe in this process. And so on that note, I want to thank everybody who recently ran for office, for those of you who, for those individuals who successfully gained the support of voters. There is no better feeling than winning and taking the sacred job of being the voice of your constituents. So congratulations, all of you who won your race and our stolen runoff elections. Thank you. And then finally, I want to also recognize and thank our city council, who, the individuals that were reelected, and the new individuals who were elected. And of course, our great mayor, Ron Yenberg, for his recent reelection. In his final term as mayor, we look forward to a productive cooperation between the mayor's office and CPS Energy. Again, congratulations for all of you who chose to run, to participate in this great public process that we call democracy. And for those of you who will serve on city council and will continue to work with us at a state level, as well as at a local level, congratulations to all of you. So this concludes my chairman's remarks. There's quite a bit of a packed agenda that we must address today. So again, thank you for those of you who are here in person, who are tuned in and continue to participate in this public forum process. Your input, your engagement is important to us. So again, congratulations, CPS. Congratulations to our elected officials, and congratulations to our mayor. Okay, so item number five. So today, we're going to talk about the rate advisory committee, and we're going to recognize a RAC member and introduce a new one. And Dr. Romero, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, we don't have a report today. We are meeting later this week with RAC. RAC is getting close to finishing up, making recommendations to us on rate design and affordability. So Ann, if you can make our presentation today. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So we do have Dr. Femi, and we also have Miriam Junket. They are virtual with us. So if y'all could turn your cameras on and join us. The whole purpose today is just to thank Dr. Femi for all of his service and to welcome Ms. Junket into our new RAC membership. So I will turn it back over to y'all. It's an easy presentation.
Do you have any comments? I know it was your suggestion, Mr. Steen.
Hello, Dr. Femi. Can we hear him? We can't hear you, Dr. Femi. Well, I just wanted to take some time to thank you for all your civic service, specifically your service on the RAC. And I've gotten to know you and become a big admirer of yours. I think you're a person of high ethics. You're civic-minded, extremely bright, even-tempered, and really, an ideal person to have served on the RAC. And I just wanted to thank you for all the time you put in to the RAC and tell you that I have the utmost aberration for you. And I know all of us at the dais here would like to join in thanking you. And the mayor is late, but I know he, at our last meeting, and maybe you listened to that last meeting? I know you like to, Dr. Femi. Well, you heard the mayor say some very nice things about you. I know if he were here, he would be saying the same thing. But it just seems inadequate to, in terms of all the efforts you've put in. And I know before that, you had a major position with the climate group. And just want to wish you well and hope everything's going well for you in California.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank you.
I think, I think Dr. Osadelli is trying to speak. We still can't hear you if you're trying to talk, Dr. Femi.
Maybe you can do a chat, and then we can translate. Might be better if you could quickly chat, Mr. Femi, because we can't quite hear you. And so through the chat, I can at least translate what your comments are. As an option. I'm sorry, Mr. Femi, we can't hear anything.
Okay. Well, I also wanted to say, Dr. Femi, thank you for all your work. I think half of the notes I took from RAC when we were doing generation planning were things that you said, and I learned a lot from you about that. So thank you for all your insight and for helping to educate a lot of us on some important points. And Ms. Junket, welcome. I didn't get to meet you in person yet, but I will this week if you're going to be there. And thank you for joining in this effort.
Dr. Femi, I just wanted to say thank you for all the advice and wisdom you provided to the RAC, in particular, and me specifically, as I transitioned into the leadership role. Our community is lesser because you are not here anymore. And so we wish you all the best in your new endeavors and welcome you back anytime you're ready to come back home. So we appreciate you very much and look forward to working with you, Miriam, as we proceed with our work on the RAC. So thank you all very much.
Mayor, you're just in time. We're thanking Dr. Osadelli.
Is it my turn? Okay. Sorry, I'm running in the room so I can make sure to offer my thanks and gratitude to Femi for the incredible work that he's done, not just in the RAC. His service has extended many years in many capacities, including with our climate plan. The work there is significant. But Femi, we appreciate all of your service and dedication to the work, and we know that your reach is going much beyond San Antonio at this point, but we certainly appreciate your friendship and look forward to your continued service when you're able for our community here. We're forever in your debt. And to your successor on the RAC, Miriam, I have great respect for the work that you've already done in our community, both as a volunteer, but also in your professional capacity. So we're very much looking forward to your addition to the RAC and know you're going to bring good things on behalf of the citizens of San Antonio. Thank you both for your service.
Thank you again, all the trustees for comments, as well as our mayor. Mayor, earlier you missed it. I congratulate not just you, but the entire council, and congratulations on your reelection. We look forward to both offices, both organizations working hand in hand to create the CPS of tomorrow. Thank you. Note, we're going to go ahead and discuss, we're going to convene shortly to executive session. If you can go over the items, Ms. Ramirez.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, and security personnel or devices under Section 551.076. And finally, to deliberate voter-take final action. action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. It is 1:30 PM as we go into executive session.
Ms. Ramirez, if you could please bring the board back to, from executive session, please.
Yes, ma'am. It is 2:30 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the post agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
Thank you. On that item, I'm going to go ahead and discuss the consent agenda items and the following will need to be approved. A, minutes of the regular board meeting held on February 27, 2023. B, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 0403, 2023. C, payment to the city of San Antonio for April 2023. D, audit and finance committee charter update. E, resolution approving the acquisition of the necessary property rights through negotiation or the process of intimate domain. F, procurement items. Number one, professional services, substation and transmission related civil engineering services, Mr. Richard Medina. Two, commodity immaterial goods, wooden poles, Mr. Richard Medina. These are all the items that are listed for consent agenda. Does the board have any question or comments on any of these items?
Madam Chair, I move to approve A through F and 1 and 2.
I would like to pull item 7D, Audit and Finance Committee Charter Update, from the consent agenda.
Any other further discussion? First of all, there was a motion. I think we need to do roll call first on the motion before we can pull that item from agenda.
No, his motions to approve the consent items. And I'm asking to, I'm requesting that Agenda Item 7D be pulled from the consent agenda. I think you just do that. Mayor, you do this all the time, right, at the city?
Trustee Mackey, would you reopen to a friendly amendment to have your motion be to approve items A, B, C, E, and F while we pull D so the motion still stands, just without item D?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you can repeat again what was agreed to?
I move to approve item A, Consent Agenda A, B, C, E, F, 1 and 2.
Second.
Right. Motion approved?
We need to go ahead and record the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
All right. Okay, on item 7D, is it possible to put page 28, which is page two of our Audit and Finance Committee Charter up on the screen? Is that possible?
The team is checking right now. For the team attempting to pull it, I have it would be the second page of that portion. In the board book, it's page 28. In the document itself, it's page 2 of 5. It will take just a moment. We have to pull it up.
I don't want to hold things up too long here. What, who's working on it? How long will it take?
I think it should be pretty quickly, but everyone here has the board book and we can, I've highlighted where it is. The materials are posted online, so those following online, you can go to the material simultaneously and look at it. So I believe you can proceed, sir.
All right. So what's before us today in terms of this charter is the elimination of a requirement that there be a financial expert on the Audit and Finance Committee. The inclusion of at least one audit committee member with financial expertise is highly, is a highly recommended best practice. This guidance was mandated for public companies by the Sarbanes-Oxley Act and should be a consideration for all organizations to adopt. When I was on the Audit and Finance Committee, we tried to move in the direction of engaging an independent financial counselor slash advisor to provide that needed contribution to the committee, but ran into opposition from the other audit committee member. Apparently the solution has now become to eliminate the requirement altogether. This goes against a highly recommended best practice and I plan to vote no. And Ms. Ramirez, please reflect in the minutes my rest now for voting no. And I do also, because I went and, like all of us, and read this because we're getting ready to amend the charter, I want to point out that in the very section that I'm focusing on, which is this Section 3 Committee Membership, is the mandate that A and F committee appointments shall be approved annually by the full board. And Ms. Ramirez, I'd ask you, is this provision that the full board has to approve committee appointments also contained in the charters of other committees?
I would be happy to check and follow up with you, sir.
Okay. In any case, I'll point out that at our February 27, 2023 board meeting, when committee board assignments were announced, no vote of approval was agendized or taken. And isn't this an oversight that needs to be remedied?
Okay, I just want to confirm. So I am checking if the approval of all committee members is required by all committee charters. And you're also objecting to the fact that the board committee assignments were not specifically voted to at the prior meeting?
Well, I'm looking at the charter. Because of this agenda item, we were directed to read the charter of the Audit and Finance Committee. And it says very clearly there, "The committee shall consist of two board members. Audit and finance committee appointments, including designation of one member, as the Audit and Finance Committee Chairperson, shall be approved annually by the full board." And when these committee assignments were made on February 27, there was no vote.
I know that this was read on February 27 because it's in the board minutes, read by Chair Gonzalez, asked that Chair Ramirez read the committee assignments, which are as following. But you're exactly right. I don't see that there was a vote on that. And that could be put on the, on Agenda Item for vote. But besides that, we're not talking about that. We're talking about this committee, committee member. The committee shall consist of two, two board members. Okay, yes, we can approve the Audit and Finance Committee as stated for appointments. However, this item that is being discussed aboard we're collecting, I remember us talking about that one February, I guess about four or five years, about three or four years ago, talking about that and put that in there because specific individuals want to be in charge, you know, and hire people outside this board to look at this financial. And I remember that did come up. And I was against it then, and I'm against it now because we're board members. And then I hear one board member on this board say, why are we doing it when I have the experience on this too? Well, I don't understand that when some people have experience. And I've been in a school district for 18 years, over $500 million over budgets, but I'm not qualified to look at that and have any experience, you know, because people think that they have more experience and more knowledge and a knowledge base to understand it more than other individuals. So I am totally supporting this item today, item today, because I was the board member that asked that this be changed many times. And it's being done now. So I support this and vote for this because we have enough individual, intelligent individuals and understand budgets that we know on this Audit and Finance Committee, things that need to be taken care of, we can take care of it. And if it needs to come to the full board, it needs to come to the full board to have full board support. So I support that too. So, but I'm not going to be sitting here paying somebody's friend to come and monitor the finances for this organization. We got competent people that's getting many rewards for doing a super job for this, this business that we don't need that person right now. We got an internal auditor, we got an external auditor, we got a great CEO, CFO, and people that understand it. And I support them 110% instead of wasting money trying to do this to please people, to pay their friends. I'm not supporting that. Thank you.
Let me ask the board secretary, what I would ask you to do is this. As long as I've been here anyway, it's been the practice of this board to, for the chairman to appoint committees as new chairs come in. Can you please go back and verify that that has always been the practice of the board? I don't believe I've ever recall there being a vote taken just for the Audit and Finance Committee. So I would ask our board secretary to come back and report back through written communication, should be fine, on the practice of the board on committee appointments.
Yes, sir. I'll determine the correct procedural requirements. And if it needs to be voted on, we can also always put it on an agenda and vote on it. Once a year.
Before we go further, Dr. Romero, please.
Thank you. I would like to get a little bit of background, not to just throw this at you, because trustee Steen mentioned something about federal legislation that could potentially pertain to these changes. Can you give us any background on this right now?
Let me say this. We've got a CFO who's fully qualified to be our CFO. And we pay a lot of financial consultants, you know, good money to give us advice. So we have whoever the board feels needs to be brought in to provide proper, you know, background and input, we can bring in at the board's request. Anybody that the board deems necessary that's already part of our financial strategy team that would, that would be in full compliance of whatever requirement might be. But I will ask our CFO to do a Sarbanes-Oxley review and see if there's some requirement out there that is being referred to here that we need to be paying attention to. But I don't believe that, I believe we've got everybody on staff and under contract that we need to provide us proper guidance.
Just to clarify, an update was provided to the Audit and Finance Committee. That update was provided by our internal auditor. And that internal auditor did review this practice with all of our existing external auditors, who said that this was not a common practice. And in fact, they could not source an expert to do that because it was not a common practice.
Okay, so just.
Just to clarify, Dr. Romero, what I was saying is that, you know, we're talking, we're talking about Sarbanes-Oxley applying to public companies. And that's what's required for a public company, you know, Exxon, you know, name a public company. It's mandated. But it should be a consideration for, this is what I said, for all organizations to adopt. And it's certainly what's called a highly recommended best practice.
Can I just ask you to clarify that? What is required? The part about engaging an independent financial counselor? Or the part about having the people who serve on the committee be financial experts?
Well, I could, I could run down some of the requirements that they look at to determine whether someone's a financial expert. So you have to look first to see if you've got the financial expert on your committee. You'll notice public, public companies, you look at someone, I'm just using Exxon, but they'll have an audit committee. And typically, it's somebody that's immediately recognizable as a financial expert, as the chair of the audit committee.
Madam Vice Chair, let me just, let me just interject here. Sarbanes-Oxley is a regulation that's applicable to publicly traded companies, which we are not.
I got it. And but you're just saying that's the best practice, practice you would prefer we follow. It's not.
It's what's referred to as a highly recommended best practice, yeah. And I could, I could, I could run down.
I think, Mr. Striste, you've clearly have stated your position. And just a friendly reminder, we're all volunteers on this board. All of us bring an array of different expertise. And if it's the will of the people and the will of city council to ensure that every trustee here is a certified CPA or CFO, then that would be the will of the people and that would be the will of the city council's direction. For now, I believe that we're in compliance. We requested information before we recommended this, this change to the, I wouldn't say Articles of Incorporation, but when we recommended this change to item number three, I mean, it was discussed, it was vetted. We continue to have an array of expertise that go through a thorough audit process in any shape or form that you can think of. We just had a presentation at the last board meeting. I don't have any, historically, the chairman has the right to assign committee members to an array of different, all the committees that we have. For example, I mean, there is no cyber expert on this board. And yet, that is one of the top risk factors in today's environment. You know, Mr. Trustee Kelly nor Mr. Trustee Mackey are certified cyber professional experts. And yet, they provide feedback and they provide recommendation and they look to experts to be able to provide that. At the end of the day, no one here would be qualified to meet those requirements. None of us are, again, certified CPAs or CFOs. But I do believe with, again, the guidance of the individuals we have internally, the guidance of the experts that we hire, we're in good hands. There's always room for improvement. I take, again, trustee Steen's concerns, you know, to heart. But I don't believe that we're not in compliance with anything that has been presented today. So on that note, we can vote. I would like to do a roll call to vote in favor of it.
This is, yes, item.
You want to talk? Do we need a motion to vote on the item?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Audit and Finance Committee Charter Update.
Roll call.
Chairman, you got roll call?
All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Motion carries, 4 to 1.
Just to clarify, the approval of consent items, we need to, did we already approve that?
Yes.
Okay. And then again, the item that was polled, which again was, the D item was also approved by, and one abstaining. Okay, on that note, I would like to.
Sorry, to clarify, no abstentions. It was a vote for in favor, one against, motion carries.
Just want to make sure. Thank you, everybody, everybody for the dialogue. On the next item, we're going to go ahead and discuss the regular agenda. And so the regular agenda items listed in item number eight is A, the Operations Oversight Committee meeting held on 4/10/2023. B, Audit and Finance Committee meeting held on 4/19/2023. C, Employee Benefit Oversight Committee meeting held on 04/19/2023. In lieu of reading the committee reports aloud, the following reports are available in your board book for review. Again, Operation Oversight Committee was held on April the 10th. Audit and Finance Committee was held on April the 19th. Employee Benefit Oversight Committee was held on April the 19th. Is there any further discussions on those items before we vote?
No, it's no vote.
All in favor? Okay, just add it to the minutes. Okay, so item number nine, summer 2023, prepare readiness.
While the presentation is coming up, I'll just say, every year, we come to this board to acknowledge publicly to our community that we're ready for the summer run season. Obviously, the summer season is our, you know, critical time of the year. Our community expects us to deliver the necessary energy that they need to get through the hot summer months. And I've got an attestation that I make to ERCOT that we're ready. So if you'll go on, Loretta. So today, here's our agenda. You know, we've tried to streamline this a bit from past agendas. You know, we've tried to streamline this a bit from past agendas itemized like for this item, to really kind of dig into specifically what each of the critical areas, Energy Supply, which is our generation division, EDS, our wires, our wires part business, and of course, our customer strategy group. You'll be hearing from leaders from those areas today, and and what you will hear, if you'll go on to the next agenda item, really is, you know, these are the areas that we're always focused on, safety of our people and all the ways that the heat brings stresses that we have to be paying attention to. Operationally, have we done all of the checks? Do we understand what the weather outlook looks like, and have we made our certifications to ERCOT that we're ready? And then, from an equipment standpoint, have we done all the fine tuning of critical assets that we need? Do we order the materials that we need, you know, to to rely on and done the inventory work that we need to do? And we do all that based on lessons learned of things that have happened in the past that make us better. So each of our areas are focused on these three critical preparation activities that 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 I, again, will sign an attestation to on June 1st that will go to ERCOT. Go on to the next slide, please. So I do want to start off, before we get into our presentation, on the the work that ERCOT does. Every year, they do the seasonal readiness assessment for the entire state that shows that ERCOT has the resources they need to serve a continued widely growing state. ERCOT has done that assessment. We've got, you know, plenty of capacity online, but this is the first summer that you will see that we're going to have our reliance on renewables, you know, to to meet that growth. In the summer months, wind and solar are very prevalent, so it's not a bad thing that that renewables are going to be leaned on maybe to a greater extent than they have in the past. But what it does acknowledge is what we've been preparing for here at CPS Energy, the fact that we haven't built a lot of dispatchable power plants in the state over the last 10 years, and the legislature currently, there are bills on the floor today that will look at market design in the House, and and those ideas have to continue to be reconciled. So I believe ERCOT is going to be in the situation of a reliance on renewables to close that gap for the next at least three years before some steel in the ground gets put in place. So so again, I just want to point to ERCOT's forecast being part of the equation as we prepare for the winter, but I will tell you that our power plants are ready to go, and our team will take you through the specifics of that. So we're going to start the presentation off with the weather outlook from Brian Alonso, our chief meteorologist, who will talk to you about what to expect this summer.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you, everybody. Trustees, it's an honor to talk with you today. Let's talk about our forecast here. Now, this says preliminary weather outlook. We actually got the official outlook as of last Thursday. Not much change here to what you're looking at from the Climate Prediction Center, which they're calling for above normal temperatures as we go through the next few months here from July all the way through August. Now, a little bit of a change here compared to what we experienced compared to last year as far as when it comes to precipitation, you kind of see that we're in that white area, which stands for equal chances, which indicates that we have a 33% probability that we could stay below, near, or even above precipitation here as we go through the next few months. But as we know, the past few weeks here have been quite wet here across South Texas, and has definitely been quite beneficial, and hopefully, we can kind of keep this trend where we can still see the potential where rain with regularity here, and we've also seen drought improvement here across South Texas, where just in last week's update, we did see a category improvement here in South Texas and including here in Bear County. Now, I wanted to talk about what's going to be happening as we look at what's going to be happening in the tropics, because, of course, the tropics are almost going to get started here, of course, of tropical season, and it starts on June 1st, and you're going to kind of hear El Nino a lot. If you like watching the news, you're going to hear this is going to be a big part into what happens in our tropical season. So first, I want to mention, El Nino does not have an impact when it comes to our actual weather here in South Texas. It has an impact when we talk about our winter forecasts. Yes, that has a big one, but as far as tropics, it's yes, it has also a big impact there. Now, I take an image here from 2016 indicating a very strong El Nino. You kind of see all that red area along the Equatorial Pacific there. That's what happens in an El Nino type pattern, where you see a lot of that warm water out in the Equatorial Pacific, but not a whole lot in the Atlantic Basin. And what typically happens is during an El Nino year, you get high wind shear in the Atlantic Basin, where wind direction changes with height, that's what wind shear is and speed, and kind of helps to tear those tropical systems apart. Tropical systems don't like to be bothered. So in the Atlantic Basin, yeah, we're not expecting a whole lot in the way of tropical activity. Right now, the forecasts are calling for slightly below to possibly near normal activity. But in the Gulf of Mexico, that wind shear is a little bit less, so that's something we'll have to be watching out for because if a tropical system does form in the Gulf of Mexico, don't have a whole lot of lead time to track it before it potentially makes landfall anywhere from Texas all the way to Florida. But this is something I'll definitely be keeping a close eye and keep updating you as we get into our tropical season. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Paulo, Vice President of Energy Supply and Market Operations.
Thank you, Brian. As Rudy said, we'll walk through, and you'll hear from different members of our leadership team to walk us through our summer readiness preparations. I will start with energy supply. You've heard Rudy and Brian touched on two areas that provide some degree of uncertainty to us as we enter every summer season. The first, with the ERCOT market, the daily combination of statewide electricity demand coupled with the availability of statewide generation can create risk for us, for everybody in the state. You know, as Chair Gonzalez mentioned earlier, it could lead to volatility in prices and price spikes, potentially more serious grid conditions. The weather, certainly, if we have extreme temperatures like we did with the record heat last summer, that increases the amount of electricity demand that our community uses on a daily basis. So my team within energy market, Energy Supply and Market Operations, our focus is mitigating the risk that, you know, that community demand outweighs the amount of available generation that we have to serve it. We can mitigate that risk, we mitigate the the risk of being having our customers exposed to those volatile market prices. So to to prepare for that, you can see, we take several steps, as shown here on the slide. Part of it starts with our demand response programs, our ability to to manage load on a daily basis, we make sure that our programs are ready to go, including our partnership with corporate communications and how we message to our community on days where we think demand response will likely be deployed. The chart on this slide does show we have excess available capacity, reserve capacity, as we call it, so we do have more available generation than our expected peak demand, and that we rely on that excess capacity to help manage through some of those uncertainties. If we have a generation unit that becomes unavailable, you know, we have that excess capacity that will step in to manage that. The extreme weather, again, higher than expected loads, higher than expected temperatures, we call on our reserve capacity to help fill in those those additional needs that our community has. We make sure we have available fuel to run our all of our generating units. So we've got provisions for fuel supply in place for the summer. That does include coordinating with our natural gas pipeline operators to manage pipeline outage risk, ensure that we can continue to supply natural gas to our our plants throughout the peak summer season. One thing I will say as we enter the the summer season, one thing is certain, and that's that things will change. So whether it's the change may be weather, the change may be generation availability, maybe changes in the ERCOT market conditions, statewide demand, statewide generation availability. But for our team, we have preparations in place to respond to those changing market conditions and to protect our community from any volatility that may occur during the summer. As with that, I will pass it over to Ryan McDonald, who will talk about our power supply, our power generation fleet.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Chair Gonzalez, the trustees. I'm Ryan McDonald with our Power Generation Department. So our seasonal readiness efforts in power generation are a several month long process that begin as early as February. We ensure that the proper maintenance is performed on all of our hot weather critical components, that tuning of our plant systems is completed, that adequate training of our staff is performed all before the May 1 deadline. Oh, thank you, sorry. We also ensure that our operating plans are reviewed and updated with lessons learned from our previous summer runs to learn year after year. All this is completed by May 1st with the ultimate certification with ERCOT by June 1st, that our units are prepared and ready to operate in the extreme hot weather conditions that tax our grid, and we're there when our customers need us the most. If there are no questions, I will hand it off to Darrell Clifton for an EDS update.
Good afternoon, trustee Gonzalez and the rest of the trustees. EDS, like Rudy said in his open comments, is is the wires business, but we also have the, you know, gas unit in there also. We have about 1,428 team members. We do have the majority of the crews that do work in the field every day in the heat, and summer prep is a really important activity for us to go go through. There's a there's a few areas that we really do focus on, you know, the first is, of course, our people, the second is our our system, and then we also look at storm restoration because there is heightened activity, you know, especially during the spring into the summer. On the, you know, Rudy kind of showed kind of some of the training and and things for safety wise that we actually, you know, you know, go over with our employees, but really, the one thing I did want to bring up is is working in the heat. We do have to prepare our crews to work in the heat because, as as we all know, they don't have an option. They do have to work in the heat. One thing that we do look at is teaching people is what are the symptoms of heat related illnesses and how to recognize them, because a lot of times, people who are experiencing heat related illnesses don't understand that, and you've got to depend on on the on the people, the people working with them. You know, so, you know, as a management team, we go over, you know, how to mitigate this through proper hydration, nutrition, and taking frequent breaks. The second area I talked about is our system. Starting in the fall, our planning teams, they review all of our circuits to see if they're if they're approaching the design capacity of of the circuit, because, you know, every summer, our load keeps increasing a little more, and we do have to have jobs that that actually go in and improve our system to make sure that we are not overloading any any in any of our circuits. This past year has been, you know, a, well, don't want to say a challenge, we've had to work really closely with our engineering and our supply chain to really prioritize jobs, but I am happy to say all of our circuits are, you know, within their design capacity. The last part is, you know, restoration, you know, we are in the peak of our our storm season right now. One thing that we've had to look at is making sure that we have the material in stock to restore power when we when we do have these storms. You know, last last year, we actually created a storeroom specifically for storm restoration stock items. Part of our prep for each storm is we review, you know, what is in this storeroom. If we do use it, we immediately after the storm, again, will review to see what we used and and put that, put those items back in that storeroom, and that storeroom is not used for day to day material needs. Unless there's questions, I'll turn it over to Leroy Perez, the VP of System Operations and Reliability.
Thank you, Darrell. And good afternoon, Chair and trustees. Again, my name is Leroy Perez, I'm Vice President, System Operations and Reliability, and in partnership with the tasks Darrell covered, I'm happy to be here to discuss three main highlights that my area focuses on with our summer preparations. The first focus is with the load shed. Following the winter storm of 2021, sorry, thank you, following the winter storm of 2021, we continue to maintain increased capacity of our load shed program. We also focus on our readiness to implement load shed, and we achieve this readiness by providing and completing training by our system operators, which training is our second focus item. Our operators maintain readiness by conducting training with both load shed and Black Start with ERCOT. Another important aspect of our summer prep is with collaborating, conducting drills and exercises with our partners. We've participated in a summer heat planning meeting with the city's Emergency Operations Center. In June, we'll be activating our enterprise incident management team, we'll we'll be participating in a severe weather event exercise, and our preparation includes collaboration with ERCOT, where we participate in coordination meetings beginning in the spring, and we'll be participating in a hurricane drill with ERCOT in August. And lastly, for my update, I'd like to call out the photo on the right. I mentioned our preparation includes training of our personnel and collaboration with our partners. This collaboration includes a demonstration with the San Antonio Fire Department, and this Arcan Spark demo provides education and safety training of our power lines to our members of the fire department, and I would like to thank them for our partnership. This concludes my update, and I would like to now turn it over to Kristen Wagner, Vice President of Customer Experience Operations.
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Kristen Wagner, and I am just one of nearly 550 customer strategy employees that are focused on helping customers through this high heat and inevitably high bill season. As you can see, we have a lot of initiatives going on, but I'll just walk you through a few. For example, our demand response program runs through the summer, and it does offer financial incentive, excuse me, for customers. And I have a stat, from last year alone, our customers were able to save more than 100 megawatts, which is enough to serve more than 20,000 homes in San Antonio. Our compassionate approach to collections is ongoing, and we will continue to do what we've committed to the board to do for our collection tactics, but I think the message here is that we do not have any customers that need to be disconnected. If they contact us, if they reach out to us, we have the ability to connect them with the services they need, as well as work through payment arrangements to make sure that they keep the power on. Through our targeted outreach, we do have programs where we're able to use data to connect to customers where they are and be able to partner with them in at the times that are convenient for them. And we're working to optimize our staffing, excuse me, staffing levels to ensure that all of the teams have the capacity to support all of these ongoing programs so that customers continue to connect to the assistance that they need. And finally, we can't do it all alone, so we will continue to partner with our over 100 nonprofits and community community agencies to ensure that we connect customers with the services that are needed, including bill assistance. So again, we are here, we are able to help, and we have all the assistance programs that are needed to get us through this peak season. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Melissa Sorolla, Vice President of Corporate Communications and Marketing.
Good afternoon, trustees. Good to see you today. I'll I'll close it out for us. As you recall, Chair Gonzalez mentioned this earlier today, we are going to start launching our summer customer communications and a marketing campaign. And if you recall, last year was the first year that we rolled out this color coded campaign. So it had tips based on the color, based on the work that Kevin's team does and insight that we received from ERCOT on things customers can do to save energy, save money, and stay safe. And Kristen brought up a very good point. As part of this campaign ongoing will be awareness on how we can connect customers to assistance. We're going to build on that campaign this year. We heard customer feedback that they appreciated all the tips, they just wanted to hear it more often and in places where they are. So this is a snapshot of some of the things that you'll see this year. Some are tried and true, and we have billboards that coincide with the different color levels that are responsive, so we can change those out on a daily basis. We will be doing direct mailing and emails to customers. We will be doing direct mailing and emails to customers. Everything we do is in English and Spanish. You'll see some examples of some assistance messaging that we'll have in via buses this year. And new things that we're doing, to the right, you'll see some mockups of awareness messaging that we'll have in malls, in Ingram Park Mall and North Star Mall. But also, we're excited about this next partnership, and that's with HEB and General Dollar Stores. So everybody gets a receipt every time they go and buy groceries. So we're going to start incorporating messaging into those locations. And something you don't see on here, that we were just able to finalize, outside HEB stores, their sanitizing stations, that we're going to be able to put messaging on as well. So we're trying different things to reach our customers. Partnerships are also very important. I think Leroy mentioned some of the trainings. Our communications team does those trainings as well so that we're up to speed. We have met with ERCOT communications team to give them an overview of our campaign. We're inviting our Public Information Officer partners to the office this week where we'll go over this as well, and we'll go anywhere that we can to spread the word about these opportunities. And that concludes our campaign, I mean, our update. If you have questions for any of us.
Any questions by our fellow trustees or mayor? Dr. Romero, floor is yours.
I just have a couple of questions. So Rudy, if we could go to the table on Slide 5, and I've seen this table several times before. And I'm just curious, because there's reality and then there's choices about how you put reality into a table. So why exactly is it presented in this way? But you know what I mean? Like, it makes it look like, oh, we're going to use up all the wind, and if that is all used up, then we'll go into solar.
It's just the way ERCOT presents the slides. They've tried to come up with some new ways to show, you know, kind of the prioritization of how the market utilizes the resources available to, you know, to match to load. So this is an ERCOT slide, and that really is just meant to show that, you know, there will be times of the year where you will get into, you know, wind and solar to cover, you know, the peak, depending upon, and again, you know, last year, I think there were eight times where things got tight. You know, this year, with all the rain we've gotten, we're going into the summer better off because it's already, the ground itself is cooler because of the rain. So the intensity of the heat won't be quite as bad because you're not getting the ground, you know, adding to it. Last year, we had 18 days of 100 degrees by now. This year, the highest we've gotten is 94. So overall, you know, if it's an average summer, you know, the times where we'll be short of dispatchable, you know, should be pretty minimal. But, you know, this is, you know, as Texas continues to grow, this is going to be, you know, we're going to be forced to learn how to rely on renewables in a way that provides reliability. There's just no way around that.
Yeah, I just wanted you to clarify that, and I appreciate it because I don't want people to look at this chart and think this is some kind of prioritization. So that people would say, why are we investing in solar? We don't even use it until we use up all the wind.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the way it works in the ERCOT market is nuclear, you know, because you have to run nuclear is always usually, you know, first in the stack, and then you take as much wind and solar as are available in the market, and then you start ramping dispatchable plants up or down depending upon what the need is. So the stack actually isn't necessarily matched to this. It's just showing you, you get into those intermittent resources a little bit more, you know, a little bit more frequently.
Okay, thank you. And also, I'm assuming we are better off already than we were last year. As I recall, because of the May heat, last year, we got behind on maintenance on some of the plants.
We did. Right now, we've got two units that we're working on, Spruce 2 and one of the summers units is still down, but we're coming out of those over the next couple of weeks. So we'll have all our resources available before it gets real hot.
Okay, thanks. And then I have a quick question for Brian, please. Because I know that when you look at the news, maybe it's just me, but it seems like there's a simple message coming out, El Nino, more heat. And then you were giving us a more nuanced approach to say that El Nino may not actually impact our summer forecast, and then because of what Rudy said about all the rain, that the ground is cooler. So what is it then that's leading the forecast for higher temperatures this summer?
Well, we typically see that high pressure will set up across the western parts of the United States, and that's what the forecast was calling for, and we go back to that. And that's why you're seeing a little bit more out west versus what's happening out east. And when you get high pressure, we get the sinking motion going on in the atmosphere, and that tends to heat things up, and that's why we do see those temperatures going on. And at the same time, as Rudy has mentioned, yes, with the past couple of rain events that we've seen, the ground is saturated, and because of that, our temperatures are not expected to be really high over at least, let's say, the short term, the next few weeks. We'll see those temperatures almost near normal. But eventually, if we continue to get into a pattern where that rain doesn't come, then yeah, the ground is going to start to dry out, and that's where we're going to start to see more in the way of hotter temperatures.
Okay, thank you. We love to hear you talk.
Thank you. Appreciate.
Well, she likes to hear you talk. No, on a serious note, I also wanted to ask the following question, and maybe this is for Melissa's Corporate Communications Department, or you or anyone. Is there a difference between ERCOT's alerts and CPS's alerts, CPS Energy alerts, when it comes to warning our customers? I also want to make sure that I understand that correctly and that people in our audience who are listening or here in public understand that.
That's a really good, really good point there. So the green and the yellow, that's coming from us. When we get into...
What else? Is there a visual, please?
And Loretta's been, you know, prodding me about moving the slides forward. All good here. I went too fast. So the orange and the red, we won't talk about orange and red unless ERCOT's talking about whether or not there's an issue there. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to meet with them two weeks ago, knowing that they have new team members on their team. We know that they're expanding their communications as well and enhancing that, so they were very appreciative of us talking to them about that.
Okay, so just again, reiterate again for our audience that there is a difference. And so when it comes to ERCOT, we're talking about, again?
Orange and the red.
Orange and red.
Yes.
And so when it's us communicating to, you know, our customers, then it's what color?
It's green.
Green and yellow. Green and yellow. So I think it's important that we understand the difference and so that we're not, again, oh my God, oh my God, CPS doesn't have capacity. It's really about the difference in the Texas grid versus San Antonio grid.
And that's part of our messaging out there, too, because we don't want customers to be afraid as it gets into high temperatures in particular, or if we start talking to them about saving energy, a lot of times that's too, it's because we want them to save energy on their bills, knowing different factors out there.
Okay, well, thank you very much for, again, pointing it out and clarifying and making sure that we have this communication awareness throughout the whole summer for the campaign.
It'll be ongoing, so we invite you all to share our information, too.
Thank you so much. Is there any further comments or questions by fellow trustees? The only thing, again, I want to conclude, we obviously heard several individuals from CPS and preparing us for, again, the summer. I think the two concerns I have as a citizen, as a trustee, even if the weather pattern improves, we obviously will see higher prices due to the economy. So do what you can to, again, walk into a customer service center, participate in some of the community events, and make arrangements both as a business as well as a citizen. And so we are here to support you, to get you through this summer. Again, thank you very much for those excellent presentations and for getting us ready for the summer. If we can now move on to item number 10, and the discussion is, again, supply chain impacts to development. And I believe we have Ms. Maria Satin and Ms. Karma Nielsen.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We really appreciate the opportunity to provide the board an update on supply chain mitigation efforts. I will proceed with the agenda. These are some of the items that Karma and I will be going over, supply chain constraints on my side, customer impacts on hers. But at the end, all of our cross-functional team, we work together in the spirit of a one team to make sure that we remain focused, mitigate the continued supply chain constraints that we know are impacting our community. I will go over some of the materials that are currently impacted. This is a sample list of some of the items that are a challenge. And I will highlight the distribution transformers because that seems to be one of the items that's mostly needed in our community. Please know that we are remaining engaged with our community, with our, but we call our developers, but it's really all stakeholders to make sure that we have two-way communication and updates to let them know what we're hearing from our industry. We have a number of mitigation efforts that our team has deployed. Here are some of them, and I will call out that first one because in the increasing diversity of material sourcing, and in order to expand the list of vendors, we ended up relaxing our standards for transformers. This resulted in some failures that we saw in January, but I really want to, I'm really proud to share that the manufacturers partnered together with us, they shored up training, and they made some significant investment in quality assurance, but we continue to monitor that as we grow the list of vendors. We've also increased the communication touchpoints when it comes to all of our materials that we're not, are not easily or accessible to find. We partner with suppliers, with our suppliers, with manufacturers, trade organizations like the Texas Public Power Association, TPPC, the Large Public Power Council, LPPC, you heard about APPA earlier, and even peer utilities. We're really engaging them a lot more to see, are there any lessons learned out there? Are there any stones that we're leaving unturned? And even locally, the Fair Contracting Coalition is one organization we've used to try to get the word out to our community as far as winds. We are now out of COVID, fortunately, so our team is making in-person visits to our manufacturing facilities this month and next month, and we're able to bring updates back as we pull those together. But all of us working together, it does take a village, as they say. We are committed to finding every possible solution because we know it is impacting our community. I will focus on distribution transformers on this particular slide. The primary drivers of constraints continue to be raw materials and labor shortages. We have heard this for, this is our third year now. What's made it, what exacerbated in our community was the growth, the significant growth here in our city and our county. And one data point is we're utilizing now 50% higher material usage when we compare this year to 2019. We're committing, sorry, we're competing with a lot of initiatives that we highlight there, but we also compete with weather. June 1st is the kickoff of hurricane season, and so we monitor that heavily because we know any of the communities that are impacted by hurricanes will also have a pool on some of these materials. On the right are some examples of articles that we have published going back to 2021. We used our newsroom, we used a variety of media to get this information out. I know our CEO, Rudy Garza, sent out a letter to the Public Utility Commission of Texas last year in February, escalating the issue specific to transformers. And transformers were also on the agenda this year in the SA to DC trip. Wanted to make sure that at the federal level, folks understood what we were experiencing locally. And last but not least, we encourage a lot of discussion with our community. I'll share some of my peers and I, we hold weekly conversations with interested parties who want to bring manufacturing of transformers here local to San Antonio. As far as government response, our industry peers, we've all been monitoring, and CPS, we've all been monitoring what's been going on in DC, and here's just a sampling. But the Department of Energy briefly engaged and considered using the Defense Production Act to ramp up production of transformers. What we heard was that it prioritized energy efficiency and focused funding more for domestic production of electric heat pumps and printed circuit boards. Additionally, there's an unintended consequence that may be coming to fruition if the DOE's proposed new standard passes, and that's changing the core inside the transformer from our traditional grain-oriented electrical steel to an amorphous steel core. Although it makes it a little bit more energy efficient, it will make it heavier, and so as a result, that overhead transformer is going to require a thicker pole, which are already a challenge to secure. And we have our forestry service that's also pushing back conservation of trees. So that's something else that's in our radar. And I now have the pleasure of bringing up Karma Nielsen, who's our Vice President of Customer Value Optimization. She's going to go over the customer impacts.
Good afternoon, and thank you, trustees, for allowing me the opportunity to provide additional information regarding the single- and three-phase padmount transformers, as well as a lot of the mitigation pieces that we're doing and creating solutions with our stakeholders. The next two slides, we're going to be providing really a high-level view of the impact that transformers, the transformer shortage is actually having on our residential and commercial community. Our single-phase transformers typically serve residential subdivisions and multifamily housing. And with that, that happens to be our largest growth that we're having in San Antonio right now. But we are aware that commercial follows residential, and so we're trying to be as prepared as possible. The information in the yellow boxes provides you a view of the single-phase padmount transformers that are needed to support current residential and multifamily projects. The lead times for these single-phase padmount transformers can be up to 12 months, but there is good news. We are starting to see more single-phase transformers trickle in, and with that, we know that we are, it's important for us to try and get these subdivisions and multifamily housing energized as quickly as possible. So with that, we have engaged and we are working a six-day work week to install transformers to complete customer projects. The three-phase padmount transformers that we show here, these are transformers that really support our industrial and commercial customers, and these customers include data centers, grocery stores, manufacturing, hospitals, and even large EV charging stations. Similar to the single-phase transformers, the lead times for three-phase padmated transformers have dramatically increased in a relatively short amount of time. We're now seeing three-phase units up to 24 months. Though the number of the three-phase that you see in the yellow boxes, these projects in transformers are less than what we saw in the previous slide with the single-phase transformers. It's still important to note that these transformers are much larger, and they require more raw materials, like Maria was talking about, to manufacture these lead times to, you know, for us to be able to increase our transformer receipt. To help customers have more control, we have created a customer referral material program, and that has resulted in the purchase of an additional 22 transformers. This referral program is a customer will go and find these, a lot of our customers build outside of San Antonio, so they have a lot of connections with other utilities and vendors and manufacturers. And so with that, they may find those 1Z, 2Zs transformers that are not in our big manufacturer vendor list. And so once they do find those, our supply chain folks will work with their manufacturers or vendors and bring those transformers here as long as they do meet our standards. And those are placed at the customer site that actually located those transformers. This slide really is a sample of only some of the mitigation efforts that we have created with our stakeholders, and I am just going to highlight a few of them. You know, communicating with our customers has really remained our top priority, and our communication has consisted of 16,000 touchpoints through developers, professional associations, educational webinars, CPS Energy's website, and even the City of San Antonio's developer meetings. But more importantly, we always have those face-to-face with our designers and our customers in those direct meetings. We're going to continue to analyze our design specifications for ways that we can relax requirements without jeopardizing safety. Maria talked about this, as well as Mr. Duncan earlier today in Citizens to Be Heard. This was how we were able to support his customer request, and it's just understanding the design and not necessarily doing it how the design and not necessarily doing it how we've always done it, but doing it how we need to do it today to be able to energize these customers and get them moving. We are going to continue to develop, to partner with our stakeholders, our developer communities through associations like the Real Estate Council of San Antonio, a Greater San Antonio Builders Association, and the City of San Antonio's Development Process Task Force, as well as today, Mr. Pat Garcia from San Antonio Manufacturers Association talked about how he had brought us a vendor that we were able to kind of start working with to try and get more transformers for our customers. We're also asking our developers to provide any future load growth that they are designing right now, that they may not have all of their plans, but if they are giving us the loads that they are looking at right now, it kind of helps us anticipate what this future is going to look like, and so we can do our very best to try and secure all the materials we need to energize these projects. You know, we understand that the supply chain issues are extremely frustrating for our developers, and CPS Energy has and will remain committed to working with our developers, our outside engineering firms, City of San Antonio, the associations, and we're going to continue to really identify what these short and these long-term, excuse me, solutions are, and that so we can continue to support the community's growth for all of our customers. This concludes the supply chain impact presentation, and Maria and I are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for those presentations on supply chain impacts to development. Again, trustees, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Steen?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. Mr. Garza, this is an area I want to compliment you on. I think you've succeeded in getting your team really focused on supply chain issues. We've seen a lot of collaboration with affected shareholders, lots of communication, and I got a number of calls early on, very panicked calls from people, but lately, I'm getting a lot of positive comments, and that was reflected today in the comments we heard during Citizens to Be Heard. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. It's all the team, quite frankly. They're, you know, kicking over every rock across the globe, looking for new suppliers and getting flexible in ways we've never been flexible before to work with our builders to get them what they need. In spite of the challenges that you saw reflected in these slides, San Antonio has continued to maintain its growth. We're still the third hottest growth market in the country right now as a community, and I think the only reason that is able to exist is because of the work of the team. So, you know, I appreciate the recognition, but it's the work the team continues to do in partnership with our community, which is what San Antonio expects of CPS Energy. So, thank you.
I wanted to mention that I went to one of the meetings, and I was very impressed in some of the people we're presenting today, and I was an observer, but just seeing the interaction and the, this is a very difficult problem, and it requires some creativity and flexibility, and I saw that in our people, where they're willing to, you know, think outside the box in terms of how are we going to help our community here.
Mr., I'm sorry, I was going to say trustee, but then you're also a doctor, so sorry about that, Dr. Mackey.
Again, I'd like to reflect on this, and hearing our constituents come up and our business community come up and talk about the communication and the things that you all are doing to make these things happen for them, you know, it sounds good. I really appreciate that. Your team is doing an extremely great job in making these things happen, and that's what it's all about, is keep up the good work.
Hey, Dr. Romero?
Yeah, just same thing. This has been a really impressive story. I appreciate it. I appreciate you doing the briefing today. Trustee Steen and I had asked for this, and I also want to thank the real estate and development community, because like Trustee Steen, I went from getting angry calls to follow-up saying, we wanted to tell you things are much better. So that was nice to have that follow-up, to know that there was a good, not ending, but a good change to the story. So thank you all. It has been very impressive.
Let me, I don't want it to get lost. Pat Garcia with the San Antonio Manufacturers Association was here earlier. What we're actually, one of the things that hadn't hit yet, so you didn't see it up there, but we're working on manufacturing capacity for transformers in San Antonio. And if we're able to crack that nut, not only do we get, not only would we be able to build transformers in San Antonio for what we need, but we can help New Braunfels and Austin and the other communities around us have been good partners as well, and create jobs, you know, right here. So more to come, I think, along those lines, but we're certainly chasing that endeavor.
No, and just for everybody's awareness, that is an EDF, economic development, priority for the city as well, so we'll be working in partnership.
And it's more than that. Not only is it an EDF, regional or local opportunity, but again, it's our commitment to small business and using local resources first. The only way to improve your capacity is to always be dependent on your own resources and not a third party, and this is a great way. So again, I want to thank everybody, all the trustees who are actively, you know, participating and putting some pressure and collaborating and also being patient with this, and this is just another prime example, we collectively work together, what we can accomplish. So on that note, I want to go ahead and move to item number nine, which is the, I'm sorry, 11, which is the JP Morgan Investor Forum highlights our CEO Cory Kunkunski. There you go.
Before Cory gets going on this particular item, you know, we're going to try to find, I think, engagements that the board would be interested in, and I think this is certainly one of them. I've joined Cory and the team in New York early this month, I guess it was now. It seems, you know, it's only been a few weeks, but it seemed like six months ago already. But primarily, I think a lot of the folks that we spoke to up there wanted to get to know me a little better and talk through our strategy for the future, and I think what Cory's going to cover today really is to talk about some of the conversations that we have while we're up there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cory.
Very good. Thank you, Rudy. Thank you, Chair Gonzalez. Appreciate that. And as Rudy mentioned, you know, we did get to take him up, it was late April, and these types of investor conferences used to be pretty common, pre-COVID, and they're starting to come back again. And, you know, really, I'll hit on a few things. Investor relations is, you know, a key function that we do at CPS, and that's effectively what we were doing. It's really an opportunity just to create awareness of CPS or company and everything we do amongst the investor community. And so when we talk about going to, quote, capital markets, you know, these are the investors that are there who are looking to buy us, our debt, rather. So maintaining this access to the markets is critical, and, you know, Rudy being in his role, this is one of the first opportunities we've had to introduce him face-to-face. And like he mentioned, it really was an awesome opportunity to go one-on-one with some investors for a day and a half. You know, just to get a flavor of some of the names you'd recognize of the type of investment firms that hold our debt, you can see on the slide, you know, Vanguard, BlackRock, some of the names that are quite familiar, household names. And we had opportunities to talk to these folks and folks that may be, you know, smaller in name recognition, but it was really great. This is pretty relevant, because as the board knows, we'll be in the capital markets next, or rather, this week, today, sorry, tomorrow and Wednesday for a few transactions. And so the timing of this was great because they could, you know, get to know us in advance of the transaction that we'll be having over the next couple of days. It was really interesting, not only is it kind of a big forum where, you know, we get to present, you know, Rudy and I did a kind of dual presentation to a larger group, but you also break off in one-on-one sessions, and we had about six or seven of those that we broke off in kind of side rooms for about 30 minutes or so. And, you know, the folks that are doing the buying are asking really pointed questions, and we got a lot of questions around, you know, the Texas legislature and the work they're doing and the potential changes and what that means for us. Asked a lot of questions about our, you know, rate increase plans that we've talked about over the last couple of years, other regulatory items, and obviously, you know, we had questions about the generation plan that we just had the board approve earlier this year. So really great discussion, Rudy did a great job, you know, hitting on those points. We had the team with us as well, the finance team. So it was really great, and this really just serves as an awareness piece for the board, you know, kind of related to our transactions that are coming up. Early May, we had the rating agencies reaffirm our rating as well, which is about a week and a half after this presentation, so it all kind of fell in line, the types of activities and exposures going into, you know, this week in our pricing. So all in all, pretty good. Just wanted to give a really brief update before we wrapped up, and happy to answer any questions from the board.
Dean, any feedback? Mr. Steen, Dr. Mackey, Dr. Romero, Mayor?
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, CEO recognition.
So we're going to do a couple of things today. We're going to, I'm going to ask after this first recognition for our leadership team and the folks from, the leaders from EDS to come up to take a picture for the RP3 designation we received from, we talked about earlier, from APPA. What I'd like to cover first, the audit, our annual audit is a big effort. I'm not sure anybody in the community understands how much effort it takes from audit services and financial services to complete our audit each year. It's a culmination of a lot of work that's done the entire fiscal year to answer questions and to engage with our auditing firm, which is KPMG. The audit reflects all the fiscal year's work to record all the monthly transactions, evaluate and record new transactions, research the authoritative guidance and UGASB rules for implementation, complete the monthly closing and reporting processes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The audit is the championship game, quote-unquote, and everyone enterprise-wide works in a highly connected and collaborative manner to achieve a win and reach our common goal. Achieving the unmodified clean audit opinion confirms that CPS Energy's books and financial statements are accurate and maintained with high excellence and strong integrity, and I don't ever want it to be overlooked how important it is that our audit comes out clean, and it is a huge focus of mine and my leadership team. But these are the folks that actually make it happen, year in and year out. I'm very proud of what this team has been able to accomplish. Transitioning to a new auditor last year was horribly difficult, but we got through it, and this year it went a lot smoother, a lot smoother, and I just want to commend you all for your work. Congratulations, and thank you for ensuring that we have a clean audit year in and year out. So with that, we'll give you a round of applause. So, thank you all very much. Congratulations. So now I'm going to ask my direct reports team to come up, along with, I don't know if Clifton tech-tailed and got out of here, but Leroy I know is here. Leroy, if you'll do me a favor, and come on up here, and I want you to hold the plaque directly behind our chair, and then everybody else can kind of circle around you for the leaders that are still in the room. Medina is up in DC on my behalf today, so Richard Medina is not here, but Leroy is here in his stead. This diamond resignation, this diamond designation from APPA, you know, you mentioned, you know, 250-plus utilities that receive this designation. That's out of 2,200 public power utilities across the country. So while 250 sounds like a lot, it's actually about 1% of the utilities across the country earned the designation that CPS Energy has for reliability. Again, we can't have all our line crews and our utility workers from the field joining us, but, you know, this weekend we had some weather, and, you know, I sent a message to my team that, you know, we had, I don't know how many thousands of lightning strikes overnight on Friday night. It was pretty bad. Our team got that storm restored in less than 12 hours. Amazing, amazing work that leads to recognitions of this nature. So with that, we'll take a quick picture, and again, to the leadership team, to everybody involved in maintaining reliability for CPS Energy customers, thank you. This is a designation that speaks to your commitment to our customers and to the San All right, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
I have a question for the CEO. Mr. Garza, of course, you know that I'd like to have a financial report at every meeting, but I think that the, whatever, you all decided that we were going to do it in a different way, and so not long ago, I don't have a date on this, but we got this sheet right here that says Enterprise Performance Update, and it says there'll be a standing board agenda item each month, and then it goes down April, May, June, and so April was the metrics update, which we got, and it says here, May, Financial Update. So the question is, what happened?
Yeah, we'll be presenting the quarterly update in June, sir, so it's just the timing.
All right, thank you.
Steen, okay, on that item, and just make sure, as I move to item number 13, review of any action items. Are there any action items? Board Secretary?
I have no action items to update you on from last meeting for this meeting. I have three, determine if the full board approval is required for all committee charters, while confirming past practice of the board, and provide that in a written update to the board. I also have to determine if board approval of audit and finance committee members just requires a vote, and if so, agendize that as appropriate after discussing with the Chair. And the final action I'll item is a request, excuse me, from Trustee Steen to include his comments on consent agenda item 70 in the minutes.
Conclude the meeting, and again, want to thank my fellow board trustees, who again have the fiduciary responsibility to do what's best interest of all stakeholders. In addition to that, I also want to thank them for challenging and having their opinions as well as being engaged and being very active. So again, collectively, this is the only way that we're going to continue to build upon what we are doing and what needs to be necessary for a better CPS for tomorrow. On that note, item number 14, which is to officially adjourn the meeting. Okay, a meeting is adjourned. The time is 3:47. Thank you, everybody.